Good.
Call to me in order, roll call please.
Councilmember Mersch.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Black is absent. Mayor Protem Derrinham.
Here.
And Mayor Piper.
Here.
Stand for the pledge allegiance. Hey, Pat, you want to do it?
Is that me?
That's Pat. I'll do that next time.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we're going to start with presentations. A receiving file from the Cal Water regarding the new fire hardening reliability project along Appaloosa and Upper Blackwater Canyon and a verbal update of the new above-ground mains centering and quail ridge.
Hi, everyone.
So, Mayor, at this time, I will go ahead and ask that our guests, if they can identify themselves and their roles and their capacity within Cal Water, and then we will go ahead and we'll proceed with the presentation on behalf of Cal Water as well. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Renzo Yala, production superintendent for Cal Water.
My name's Brandon Union. I'm a design engineer with Cal Water.
So, before we begin, I did want to just provide a brief update on two projects that we've recently completed. The first one is on centering. That project we completed on October 25th to bring our infrastructure above ground. That was approximately 450 feet of eight-inch water pipe. And then, secondly, we've recently completed our above-ground water pipe installation on Quail Ridge, which was approximately 220 feet. That project was just completed earlier this month, I want to say December 5th. So, those are some positive facts that I wanted to provide prior to the presentation. So, today, we're going to be talking about our wildfire hardening reliability project. This project is specifically along Appaloosa Lane and Upper Blackwater Canyon. I'm not Augustine Beza and Renzo Yala. And this is, of course, Brandon. So, our agenda first is to talk about the Cal Water overview. Then, we'll talk about the project background, the scope, the timeline, and the next steps. Some facts for Cal Water. We've provided water to the area since 1970. To meet customer needs, we've purchased water from the Metropolitan Water District. Our pipeline includes 350 miles of pipeline.
Thank you, Renzo. Now, again, I'm Brandon, I'm a design engineer at California Water Service. Though, before I begin discussing the project background, I do want to discuss the differences between an MRP and a wildfire project. Now, an MRP is a main replacement project, which is just replacing existing infrastructure, while a wildfire project is an approved general rate case project. So, Cal Water conducted a wildfire assessment with all our systems within California Water Service, and for the Palos Verdes district, it received a very high fire rating. So, to combat these wildfires, we had to analyze our system, see where areas where we can have additional improvements and apply that to the general rate case. So, again, these are approved projects where there is no infrastructure. It's all new to be installed to combat wildfires. As you can see here in the blue circle, you can see that is existing infrastructure that is providing water to your community. The one circled in red, where we see no pipeline between the two green lines, that is where the wildfire project would be taking place in Appaloosa Lane. This would provide a, it would increase your grid resiliency as an additional feed for your community. It would also provide a higher water quality and additional fire flow capacity. And we can have a zoomed-in version here. In red is the proposed alignment throughout Appaloosa. Again, there's no main line there. It's going to be all brand-new. As for the project scope, it's going to be about 2,000 meter feet of six-inch main ductile iron. We are looking at installing HDSS, which is a high, which provides that joint deflection. We did have collaborations with the city in obtaining some surveying data, which is also connecting with Mickey and also Cotton Shires about this corridor. And as for the project scope, we're also going to be installing two new fire hydrants throughout this alignment and also relocating an existing vault, just to meet up with our company standards and provide additional visuals to maintain our assets. And since it's a private road, we will be requiring easements within. And we did have a community outreach already with the association back in November, so they are aware of this project. As for timeline, we already completed our preliminary design, our community outreach to the residents that will be impacted. And as for our geotech investigation, that's still ongoing. We're still in the maring. We're conducting some moorings throughout this corridor in Appaloosa. And for our final designs, we are proposing having it done by the end of this month and then discussing with the residents two and four Appaloosa, just to find that location or having an agreement of where that new vault location will be within their properties. And then, we are expecting to have construction start in February, March. It's dependent on weather and material availability, but we're willing to start ASAP. And we're looking at probably completion by May of 2025. So, next steps, again, we'll get a geotech report with those engineers, providing any recommendations for our trenching excavations, and we'll be happy to provide that to you guys. And finalizing our design plans, our easement finalizations with our property manager, Dan. He will be contacting the residents. We did look over the master deed that the association had, and it seems like we'll have to connect with each resident that have ownership of that road. And then, for us internal purposes, material procurement and construction scheduling, we'll make sure we provide updates to the city as well. And then, these are our contact information.
One, thanks, guys, for all of you for coming, and we appreciate you guys getting on it and getting it done on the above-ground. That was obviously super important. The two things that you don't need to answer right now, but if you could figure out, is the concern I would have is below that pipe where you went above-ground, that stuff's old, that's been there for a long time, and just could we replace it or do something that's gonna, because just water leaking into the ground's going to be really bad for that part. And even above it to the main, you know, where it comes across crest or where it comes across maybe spur over there, is how we minimize or get rid of anything that's leaking? And how do we know when it's leaking? And is replacing the pipe solving it? Or whatever, you guys are the experts, but that's really where the concern is from the community, is you guys fixed the part in the middle, which was obvious. Now, there's some stills concern from both above and below it, that we don't have any leaks that no one will notice for a while. So, if you can think what a path would look like to maybe do that, that'd be great. But other than that, thank you very much for coming, and we have questions real quick, but quick.
Okay. What is your motivation to initiate these projects?
Our motivation?
Yeah. There must be a cost associated with it. Projects.
For the projects? Well, that's a different internal department. So, for the...
So, you just do this for the good of the community? I mean, there's...
Yeah, it's also for the good of the community.
I get that part, which is great, but there's still a cost associated. Where does that come from?
So, for this wildfire project, it was inside the general rate case, so it had to be approved. We provided a cost estimate of what the project would be, and the CPUC will determine if that justification is valid. So, we want to increase the reliability of our systems, provide that water to your community. So, it's approved and adjusted inside your rates.
So, it's not going to result in a rate increase?
It's not a new rate increase. It's already approved. So, that's a different department. If you want additional information, I can provide for you, but for my position, I don't go through that process.
Right.
And I did have just a quick one, and again, not to put you on the spot, because I know this isn't why you came here, but we've all been dying to talk to Cal Water. First of all, I want to thank you for keeping to provide service to us, because nobody wants to be without water, so thank you for that. But how do you know? I know if I've got a leak on my property, because my usage goes up. I see something. I either see the leak, I see the moisture, my dial is spinning, my bill goes up. I see something. How does Cal Water know if in their system you have leaks? How do you monitor that?
So, a couple of things that we have is, one, we're doing daily monitoring. We do have an employee that comes by the area, especially in the high-risk areas that have been determined as having some movement. Secondly, we actually install data loggers that allow, that transmit data to us remotely, and they'll notify us of any instances where there's low pressure. So, if you understand, you know, a pipe is fully pressurized, and if there's a break, all that pressure is lost, because the water's leaking out the pipe. And that'll start sending signals to us immediately as soon as it happens, letting us know that there's an issue. Additionally, we have a second type of, another type of logger. These ones work better at night. They kind of basically are identifying the vibration that happens in the pipe. So, if there's even a miniscule leak, it'll detect that kind of seepage coming from the pipe.
And so, are those deployed throughout the community? Or is it just like at one central place where it comes into the city? Or, sorry to ask a dumb question, but...
I'll have to take a look at the specific locations, but my understanding is all the, it's the area that's in question right now that's been identified as moving, as well as just a little bit past that, just as a more of a precaution.
Thank you.
Do you have any?
Yes. There's, what I wanted to find out, there was a recent information, I don't know if you're aware, if you're monitoring, but with regard to Quail Ridge South, in the vicinity of Three Quail Ridge Road South, that there was possible water leakage, because a tree fell and the, and the whole area was saturated in the roots of the tree, indicating that it had, and hasn't been rained. So, the speculation was that it could be something from water pipes. Do you know anything about that?
No, not at this time, but we can take a look into that and get back to you.
Okay.
All right. Just want to make a motion, receiving file.
I'm under receiving file.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Thank you, guys, very much for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I got places to go.
I have a question.
Okay, hold on. How many people have questions? We can't ask questions of them. You just have to ask questions out loud, and then they'll get answers for us later.
Okay.
So, just come up and be, that's my, okay.
Hi, I'm Mitzi Nakamura at 21 Centering Road. I realized that yesterday, I found out that Cal Water was going to be at the meeting, so I took this opportunity to address. I'm over at, we've had, on Centering Road this year, we've had four separate waterline breaks, Cal Water waterline breaks, that occurred this year. We're on, we're on the properties that are below the waterline breaks. So, it just makes us very, very nervous, especially the area below 11, I think Crocker's House and 11 Centering, everything below that. I understand that you've made everything above-ground, thank you very much, but there's some areas that leads to the road, to 21 Centering, that hasn't been above-ground. And we understand that the area has basically been not, there's no land stability in that area. So far, what we know, it hasn't been stabilized. So, if we are having little miniscule leaks, mini-tiny leaks, that we are not aware of, that was the question I had with you, which I think it was addressed, but if you have miniscule leaks and large waterline breaks that are obviously obvious, is that something that you can detect before it gets worse?
Okay. And basically, they said they have some testing equipment that they're using?
Right.
And then, we're going to work with them to either figure out is, is there a better way to handle that? Is there better, because the concern you're bringing up is the concern I think everyone has, which is below where they went above-ground and above back up to crest, is how do we make sure that we're not adding more water to the landslide?
Right.
Yeah. They're aware.
That was my...
They've done the first part, which is fix the part that's breaking all the time. Now, the next part is what they're going to figure out what the next steps would be.
So, there may be like a potential of making the water lines above-ground further down to Centering?
We don't, we have no idea what that is yet. They're going to think about it, and they're going to come back with what they think is the best way to handle it.
Okay. And potentially, if they do find that, you know, the materials, the water supply lines, they're probably very outdated, will that be considered in the future to be replaced with more modern durable materials?
I know they have a plan that's for a gazillion years to replace the entire peninsula, and our hope is to move the ones that are in an area that is unstable closer to the top of the list.
Okay. So, areas like Centering would be considered?
The unstable ones closer to the top of the list.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for coming. Anybody else?
Yeah, my...
Fred?
Yeah, I was thinking about this. Obviously, there's that water tank on Crest Road, just north of Spur Road. I suspect that water tank feeds all of Centering, at least, and possibly other areas. And I suspect it's also by gravity flow, so it's not a high-pressure situation. Does Cal Water have meters either saying how much water goes into the water tank? Or a meter says how much water comes out of the water tank? Because if you have that knowledge, then you can, then it's just a simple adding up the numbers on the individual meters, which they have, and now you have it. You have, you know, how much water's being used out of that water tank, and how much water's being used by the various meters. And if they don't add up, then there's obviously a water leak somewhere up above the parcel meters. It's just a thought that they might want to think about, rather than all these little transducers or data loggers, which I'm familiar with a data logger. But I don't know where these things are placed, quite frankly. Okay?
All right, appreciated. Anybody else? Right, then I'm closing the public comment. We already had a motion, we're done, we're moving on. Thank you, guys, for coming. You don't have to stay.
And you've heard the concern, so...
All right. Is there any more with them? Nope. All right, then we're moving on to a receiving file presentation overview from the California Governor's Office for Emergency Services, Cal OES, regarding Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA and Cal OES Hazard Mitigation Assistant Program.
Mayor, members of City Council, if you recall, these past two City Council meetings, I have been sharing with you that I've been meeting with Cal OES to talk about several different grant funding programs, but in particular, we've been highlighting the City of Rancho Palos Verdes voluntary bio program. And whether or not this would be a program that the City of Rolling Hills could potentially be considered for, it's just a lot of conversations we've been having and very grateful that Robin, who is from Cal OES, is here with us this evening. She is very familiar with the programs. She is very in tune and connected with the City of RPV and what has been going out there. We were really pleased to be able to go out today in the City of Rolling Hills and really give her an opportunity to see our community through a different lens. Although, we are not visually experiencing the traumatic stress that their communities are having right now down in the Seaview, Portuguese Pan and the Beach Club, but through the lens of a Rolling Hills community, we are experiencing our own crisis on not having the utilities, such as gas and power in some parts of the city, but also streets that are demonstrating a lot of stress due to potential movement. So, Robin will be here this evening to really highlight a little bit of what we've already been sharing with you, but her being here this evening is being able to address questions that genuinely I was not able to address for you this last council meeting. And without further ado, I'd like to go ahead and introduce you to Robin, who is here this evening, coming from Sacramento, to talk to us a little bit about the Cal OES programming, and will be here to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for having me here tonight. I'll also just say, I really enjoyed the opportunity to be able to see everything, you know, in, with my own eyes in person today, knowing that all of the communities on the peninsula are all very different, their hazards are very different, and trying to interact with some of the residents today was also a really good opportunity and appreciated their time today. So, like Karina mentioned, my name's Robin, and I am the Assistant Director for Hazard Mitigation at Cal OES, and I manage the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Assistance Grants, Grant Programs. So, generally speaking, it's a long-term suite of programs and technical assistance for planning that we provide that oversees helping communities in California, tribes, and nonprofits take really long-term, meaningful steps to reduce the risk of natural hazards in their communities. And we do that through a variety of different programs. It starts with, we have a state hazard mitigation plan, so that kind of captures what we do at a state-level comprehensive approach to natural hazards. So, that means we're doing risk analysis, understanding what's going on, so that we have a lot of data to help us and help communities apply for our grants. From there, we also work with communities on their local hazard mitigation plans, which I know that you all are in the process of updating. We also try to help communities apply for the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Assistance Grants, and I know that that can be a very daunting and difficult task. We actually have a whole branch of folks who provide technical assistance, so that when we do get funding available, that cities can take advantage of that and walk through all of kind of the in-depth and difficult hurdles to get over. And then, we also coordinate across with different agencies. We're sometimes able to find matching opportunities with our partners at Cal Fire and the former Governor's Office of Planning and Research, used to be OPR, now they're Land Use and Climate Innovation, as well as some other programs that kind of lose their federal identity, so we can use their funding as match. I mentioned our state hazard mitigation plan, you know, I'm new to California. I'll be the first to say that. I moved in 2023 in March. I spent my entire career thus far, all 13 years, in the state of Wisconsin, doing the same thing. So, let's just say that I was very fortunate to have an active role in the state hazard mitigation plan, so I can understand some of the risks that California communities face. As Karina mentioned, Rancho Palos Verdes also has a grant, had a grant that was awarded in the 2022 nationally competitive grant program, BRIC, and that was where I was first exposed to the hazard, that's kind of the slow-moving landslide, if you will, that you guys are all facing here. We manage, because we have our state hazard mitigation plan, we're eligible for several HMA programs that are listed. Most of the information on the slide, I just tried to put together, so that you guys could have an additional resource in addition to Karina's report that she provided at a previous meeting. Our biggest programs are the ones that are highlighted right here, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant Program, and the Flood Mitigation Assistance Program. We're not going to talk about flood mitigation assistance, because it's only for flood hazards, as says in the name, but the two biggest and all hazard, they're also all hazard programs, are the HMGP and BRIC, and there's also a smaller congressionally appropriated grant program called the Legislative Pre-Disaster Mitigation Grant Program. It kind of operates under its own rules, because it is an earmark program. But I do mention that, depending on what types of courses of action you guys decide to take, it could be an appropriate fit for your community, if that's something you're interested in, we could probably provide more information at a different time. But I'm going to talk mostly about HMGP and BRIC. Generally speaking, as a local unit of government, you guys are eligible to apply for both the BRIC and Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. We work with all sorts of different sub-applicant types, but the most notable thing is that it's got to be an entity that can participate in a FEMA-approved hazard mitigation planning process. It is kind of the biggest eligibility hurdle, so once you complete a hazard mitigation plan, you are eligible to apply for the grants. And then, this slide just kind of outlines the major application requirements. We usually, we usually will work with a community to hit all of these hurdles, specifically the cost-effectiveness criteria. So, every single project we fund has to be cost-effective using FEMA's Benefit Cost Analysis Toolkit, and so it has to have costs less than the overall benefits over the project useful life. But we've got a team of experts that will help support that part of the development, and we usually put that upfront, since that is kind of, aside from the plan, because that takes the longest to do. The BCA is typically the process that says whether or not a project is eligible. I will also point out, you guys are no stranger to the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. You have three grants going on right now for some power line conversion, taking, converting them to underground power lines, and some vegetation management grants as well. Generally speaking, we, in addition to the planning grants and planning-related activity grants, we fund, I would say, two different types of grants that would be of interest to you guys. I think notably the construction projects, so that's kind of where the Acquisition-Demolition Program that Rancho Palos Verdes has. It kind of fits under that allocation. We also do fund project scoping, so if you decided to, we could potentially fund, like, getting contract support to put together a sub-application, if it, if it's, if it goes like beyond what our team's able to do. But knowing what we were able to do with RPV, we'd be able, I would foresee that that would be something we could support. So, generally speaking, the FEMA grant programs were really started way back when the Stafford Act was passed and the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program was born. Acquisition-Demolition, since then, has been the backbone of the HMA programs. Generally speaking, the acquisition programs were designed to help folks who were impacted by flooding disasters. So, the hurricanes, the big riverine floods, I think there are some, in California, Napa and Sonoma are two specific communities that have done hundreds of acquisition demolitions and also elevations for flood hazards, and that's kind of what the tried and true hazard mitigation programs are. So, what we ended up doing is RPV initially, and I'll walk through kind of the, what they did, and that's, I think, aside from the timeline, by which they were able to submit a sub-application, which was, I will say, record-breaking, but there was a funding available, and they were very able to leverage the opportunity, just because they had all the data from previous grant applications. This is the typical sub-grant process. So, they reached out to us, we talked through a potential, like, the project scoping calls, just where we talk with the community about what the problem is, you know, try to find more information, ask a lot of questions to see, is it basically eligible, identify some of the hurdles for doing a benefit cost analysis, collecting data, and then we'll encourage that community, if we believe it's eligible, to submit a notice of interest, where some of that data is outlined, so that we can start doing some number crunching and some research into the project. We'll also, so once that notice of interest comes in, we review that internally with our technical assistance team, and if we, again, based on what was submitted, think it's eligible, we're going to encourage the community to submit a full sub-application. We accept applications and notices of interest on a rolling basis, not just when we have notices of funding available from FEMA. So, we're constantly working with communities to scope projects and then try to find those funding opportunities when they become available, to slot communities in for, you know, what program works best, since we have a whole suite of programs available from FEMA. After we get the full sub-application, we submit that to FEMA, and then FEMA reviews it and approves it. I make it sound really easily, or make it sound really easy, it, when FEMA has the sub-application, they have to go through a complete programmatic review, an environmental historic preservation review, and then in that EHP process, we'll also do some consultation with tribes and other federal agencies for permits, if required. Okay. This just kind of outlines the technical assistance process, so we get that, we identify the problem, work with the community through that notice of interest process, and then this kind of outlines some of the things that we're evaluating when we're trying to determine eligibility and the things that FEMA will also review. I put, again, put this more on paper, knowing that you guys might want to use it as a more of a reference. Anticipate we'll be talking more and can address some of your specific questions a little bit later. I think the biggest question is how much funding is available. First, I'm going to talk about the BRIC program, which is kind of the biggest nationally competitive program. It's available on an annual basis and kind of what it has looked like for California and the nation. So, it is a national competition. So, how do California communities compete with the rest of the country? Because I think that's ultimately something worth mentioning. You know, that's, every application that gets submitted has to be reviewed by a national technical review panel, and they'll be scoring it based on the criteria outlined in a notice of funding opportunity. This year's annual notice of funding opportunity has not yet been released. It's supposed to come out sometime in early January, is what I understand. I think in one of the first two weeks. Ultimately, California generally gets about 20% of the overall funding allocation, but what does that actually mean? Because the amount of funding varies, we always also submit all of the eligible sub-applications we can. We want to try to get as much money into California communities as possible. So, any community that submits a sub-application that's eligible for the program, will submit to the national competition, and we'll work with the community to try... we'll submit to the national competition and we'll wo- work with the community to try to get that application to be as competitive as possible. Um, we know what the tried and true criteria are every single year, based on the legislation for the, that enacted the program in 2018. But every year, there's kind of a few different things, some unique flavors, if you will, and we try to make sure that every application addresses the, the criteria the best, uh, it can. The first year, uh, we submitted 26 pro- uh, projects and only four were selected. But that did, again, represent 20% of the overall funding available. I'll mention that that was also the lowest amount of money the program had ever had. Um, in the years that at least $1 billion, and from what I understand, um, the budget resolution I saw had the same $1 billion, uh, budget line item for this program, uh, for this next year, whenever they announced the NOFO. Uh, so we're assuming it'll be similar to 2021 or 2023. In 2022, we had 2.3 billion available. Um, all of our sub-applications got selected, all 19 of them in 2022, because there's a lot of money available. Um, the criteria are very heavily weighted on state building codes, uh, and local building code enforcement. California is, has one of the strongest state building codes in the country when it comes to addressing hazards and is rewarded very heavily in the scoring. So we do very well, uh, nationally. So pretty, pretty well. Um, the 2022 cycle was also the year that RPV's, um, de-watering project was, uh, applied for. So. I think before we jump into questions, just ultimately next steps, I know you guys have to determine what the next course of action is, uh, for your staff and, you know, kind of how to direct them. Um, essentially, the next process, next step in the process would be to have one of those scoping calls where we go through the specifics of, you know, the community, you know, get an idea for maybe how many properties might be interested, what some of the challenges are for data. Um, and if what we can do to try to help overcome some of those. Um, talk about the, the major, you know, requirements. You guys have, have scoped out eligible and complete sub-applications before, but this, the acquisition, uh, process is different than a vegetation management or a, a power, a power line project. Um, so we'll go through kind of the specifics and how some of the things you guys already do well, um, can translate over. Um, while that's going on, you have to complete, complete the local hazard mitigation plan. Uh, Rolling Hills Estates did receive a, uh, a grant for, through our offense, through our office to pay for the planning process. Um, I know that it kicked off in October and you guys are in the RFP process to select a contractor for right now. Um, but once a draft is, um, is submitted to our office for review, we can, we can request what's called an extraordinary circumstances waiver. If we have some funding available to submit your sub-application, even though the plan isn't done. Um, but we, we would be able to, to do that so that, once the plan is approved, FEMA can continue to move forward with that, that project. Um, the other thing is I'd also recommend, you know, sitting down with a couple of the other, you know, via Zoom or whatever, obviously with RPV being right next door, you'd probably meet face-to-face. But to talk to them a little bit more about what their program entailed, how they set it up, um, and answer their, like, so they can address the, the specific uh, nuts and bolts of how they set up their program. Um, because each community is a little bit different and we could connect you to some folks who did, um, oversee buyouts. We have a couple, uh, smaller, more limited pro- uh, programs elsewhere. One for like more of the coastal erosion type landslide and also for flood hazards, we'd be happy to connect you with other, other communities that are similar sized. Um, because obviously the experience of the Napa or Sonoma that have done hundreds of them is going to be very different than what your community is going to, going to face. So. Um, with that, I wanted to open it up to see what kind of questions you guys had. Um, like I said, I know that Karina had presented a report, um, and we had been talking about the information that she presented to you. Um, so that by the time I would come down, you guys would have an opportunity to kind of think about what those questions might be. Um, and we'd also get to see what happened next door, uh, to see what their program looked like, how successful it could be, at least through the application process. So, thank you.
All right. First, thanks for coming down.
Yeah.
Um, you have anything? Good, Pat?
So I assume in your time with Karina today, you learned some of the differences between us, assuming our city and RPV, such as the difference in size, we're tiny, at least population. And, uh, we're mostly private. We have very little infrastructure, public infrastructure. And, um, you know, I, I know a little bit or quite a bit about RPV's, um, I forget what you call the buyback, demo and, and buyback. So as I understand it, for their program, the, uh, ownership of the land that is, uh, the city's paying for will become the city's, uh, land. And that might not work out as well for us, because we typically don't own and probably don't want to own land within the city. So, you know, would, would there still be an opportunity for us to participate in this kind of a, a program?
Yeah. So I, I'll address, I think there's a couple of things buried in that question, right? Yes, absolutely. Um, so in my experience in Wisconsin, I've worked with communities of a variety of sizes and honestly, mostly pretty rural cities, population and size-wise, very similar tiers. Obviously, doing it in the flood hazard area actually comes with a lot more restrictions than conducting this type of program outside of the, the flood hazard area. So there's some very good-
Restrictions with the flood hazard or ours?
Yes, in terms of the nuts and bolts of the acquisition demolition process. Um, because once you start doing work in a waterway, there's, it gets complicated a lot more quickly. Um, I will say a lot of smaller communities, um, first of all, being, having the land, or having that HOA overlap with the city boundaries, that's not an issue. Um, unlike the FEMA Public Assistance or Individual Assistance Program, um, that, where that does complicate eligibility, for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, it doesn't. The, the issue would be, um, if the homeowner, if the resident has clear title of the property, that's really the biggest hurdle in terms of the, the real estate transaction. Um, but in terms of the, the long-term maintenance, I think that's another part of the question. Is, you guys don't have to, A, it doesn't have to be public, just because you own it, it does not have to be publicly accessible. So behind the gates, you guys can decide what, what happens, right? You're just the landowner, still subject to the HOA rules, as I would imagine. Um, you can, there's a variety of things. I think I've talked to, I talked to both Samantha and Karina about these things at length. Um, you could have an adjacent property owner lease it. They could garden. They could, anything that's, um, compatible with open space, the open space designations outlined in the FEMA Model Deed Restriction. So, once you own it, it's deed restricted and it has to, the, the deed has to record, uh, have the FEMA Model Deed Restrictions recorded in it. So it's open space in perpetuity. Um, but there are some compatible land use, um, land uses that you guys can do. So if you want it to be a park, it could be a park. You could lease it to the adjacent property owner. They could mow it, maintain it. Maybe their kids want to practice soccer or something, right? Like, so long as they're not storing a vehicle, an RV, they're not constructing anything permanent, putting a shed on it.
Horses?
They could do horses, yeah. You could use it for grazing. A lot of communities have used those lands for grazing. And because it's not in the flood hazard area, you could put, you could put a fence up around it. So that would be fine. Um, like I said, with, uh, if you wanted it to be a park, you could put like an, like a pavilion that has open four walls, you know, kind of the roof on stilts, if you will. And you could also put a public bathroom to support people, you know, using it. You could, uh, work with a conservation organization, um, to assist. That's kind of what a lot of communities will do. So you don't necessarily have to mow it or anything like that. There's a, a variety of things.
But the city would end up with the title ownership.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Would it have to be the city? I mean, could the association or something take it as common?
You would-
Isn't that, i- i- isn't that to the ci- to the city to determine? Yeah, I thought that the, um, individual cities within the requirements that the grant specifies got to make the choice, like they put X amount, u- using RPV. They put X amount towards the buyback and they chose to put X amount towards doing some other remediation.
Hmm, I don't know if I understand what you're saying. I'm sorry.
Um, that once, if the grant is approved, some of these details underneath that are up to the city to, or the grant applic- applic- key, the first, the, the group applying for the grant, um, is up to their discretion. In other words, Cal OES, my understanding was they didn't tell RPV you have to put 50% towards a, a buyout, a buyback program and use 50% towards, you know, some more de-watering.
No, you know, so all of the money for the acquisition grant, the 42 million has to go towards the acquisition demolition.
Okay, so that particular grant was all-
All for that, yep.
All of that went to that.
I think that might have been the county grant where the-
Yeah, the county, the county, that, I'm not, I can't speak to some of the county funding that was made available.
That's right. They, they gave the 10 grand. Okay.
Yeah.
Be.
Okay, so, um, with respect to that, I know that you haven't done an analysis, but I know part of the question, uh, we've been talking about is whether it would be meeting the cost-benefit analysis because of the, the cost of the land here. And I don't know, because you do so many of these and, and looking at the, the area here and given that in some times, there's been so many more applications, 26 and only four got granted. I mean, is it something that, I, and I don't know how much work it is for the NOI, but is it something that is even worth doing, you know, based on your experience?
I realize I probably should have talked more in detail about the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. I didn't go in quite detail because I thought Karina had it in her presentation, but I'm happy to go a little bit. So the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, it's attached to a federal disaster declaration, but unlike the other disaster assistance programs that can only go towards the declared areas, we can use this statewide. I would, I would compare it more to like a block grant. We get this allocation based on how bad the di- the disaster was in that, you know, for, for that area. But that we can use it at our discretion. We use our state hazard mitigation plan to kind of help inform what our overall, you know, ranking process is, but it, it really is just like we have to have hazards identified in our state plan. So long as those hazards are in there, we can fund projects for those hazards. So landslide, geologic hazards are, are, are all included in there. So, um, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, if we get a federal disaster declaration, we can use as however we want to, right? Um, the governor's office does, um, inform a lot of the prioritization, so equity is a huge factor. Um, but it doesn't necessarily mean a community necessarily has to meet certain factors. If you know that there are, like, I think we were talking today. There's a lot of folks who live on fixed incomes in this community, right? That would be a factor. That could, that would go towards prioritizing this over other grants, you know? Um, it's hard for me to say what the, like, without having a bunch of grants in front of me to be like, this one's going to be the top one, this one's going to be the bottom. But generally, equity does factor in there and we have kind of an open-ended, a more open-ended criteria than FEMA does for the BRIC program. Because they're looking at thousands of grants every year. You know, we're maybe looking, depending on this funding opportunity, dozens at most, um, for, for those. So HMGP will be able to tell you, once we get a funding opportunity, the likelihood that you're probably going to get selected. Um, and honestly, in California, I, we've had, we've gotten disaster funding every year for the last five years. And it just kind of depends on how much, I mean, in 2020, after the atmospheric rivers, in 2020, the winter of 22, 23, that's how the funding for RPV was made available. Um, we had a couple of communities get selected in BRIC, kind of unexpectedly, in the, in the 2022 year. So they, and then 2023, we had these big $50 million projects get selec- selected. And we had suddenly, a little bit under three months to try to spend it and we didn't have anything. So that's, we, when they, they had already reached out about a scoping call, we were like, oh my gosh, you guys have all this stuff started already? Can you try to do it faster? I mean, they did put two full-time staff people behind it to get it there. I mean, it was incredible, like, if I could give them an award for the fastest sub-application I've seen developed in California, they would, they would get it so far. But, um, that was because they had started the process already. Um, but back to the question, it, it depends, it really depends on how much money is available, how bad the disaster is.
Okay, so there's two separate things you're talking about. One is the, and one, that's the one that's coming in January.
Hmm, that's the BRIC one.
And then, and then that one's going to be more competitive because it's nationwide. And because we're not really, we're, we're at the end of the year already, we're going to be behind the eight ball with other communities.
Yeah, if you wanted to apply for BRIC, it'd probably be for next year, but starting now would give you, knowing especially how small your staff is, like, this isn't the only thing that your staff can do, right? That this would give them plenty of time to do it, um, if they start now to apply for next year. Um, I will say that, you know, I've gotten questions, generally speaking, about, oh, Robin, do you think, you know, with the change in administration, will, you know, this climate change-focused BRIC program be, still be around? The legislation was passed in 2018 when this administration was, you know, in. So it had very, very heavy bipartisan support because it's, I mean, every single project has to be cost-effective. And you can't argue with that. So I do think that this, I, I expect it to continue to happen just because I don't think the states will, I don't think Congress would want to see that legislation get changed because there's so much other infrastructure funding that was passed in that bill too. So. Yeah, I feel, so I feel like it's going to happen again and that allowing the staff to have a full year to work on the application process, we could definitely get like a very competitive application. The other thing with the BRIC program is we do get a state set-aside allocation, so it, that kind of varies every year. It's been between, it's usually between $1 and $2 million typically. For, that's statewide, but, you know, if you're looking at one property, it might work. Depends, it depends on the property, right, ultimately, and how much it's valued and, you know, there's a lot of things. But if we can get, get it under a state set-aside allocation, it's not to say that we couldn't fund it there. We just don't typically get projects that are small enough to fit there.
Okay, and so can one, um, notice of intent?
Cover all of them, yes.
All, okay, so that we're, we can put it into different buckets once we, we do that. And is there a group or, um, persons, like, so grant writers, so to speak, that do these kind of projects?
Well, so, the, there are, there, I mean, some communities work with consultants, but a lot of communities do support it in-house. And if you give yourself enough time to do it, you know, you, you don't have to, it doesn't have to be a full-time job for a few weeks like it was for RPV. I mean, that really, really, like, Brandy, really, their community development director should get some massive acknowledgement and appreciation for the work that she did. Um, but if you guys have a lot of time, it's definitely something that we'll be able to provide the technical assistance to get you there. And especially because, I mean, this, the city's gone through it already with those three HMGP applications. They understand how, like, we have models and we have some cost estimates for some similar work. Um, and then we could also, assuming that we can work with RPV, we can look at what does their demolition cost look like from their application? What is it like? They've got a lot of information that they may be willing to share with you guys, so you don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Okay, and then the one thing I was talking about, the cost-benefit analysis is because our property is so much larger than they are in RPV and surrounding communities, and so therefore they cost more. Is there even any basis to think that their, the cost-benefit will be satisfied because of that high cost of land?
I will say, one of the things that gets factored into these projects is environmental benefits, environmental or ecosystem service benefits. Having a larger parcel that will be dedicated to open space actually will make your benefit cost ratio go up. Um, the, the other thing, uh, because it's, it, look, the project useful life that FEMA talks about for the benefit, this might be two nuts and bolts for you guys. You can tell me to stop if you want. Um, the Benefit Cost Analysis Toolkit assigns a project useful life for acquisition to 100 years. We know that it's a permanent project, but, uh, you know, it's going to go on for perpetuity, but you accrue the benefits forever. They just, it, it, at 100 years, they kind of stop being worth counting, I guess, mathematically. So you're going to get that ecosystem services uh, for a larger lot across 100 years. So it's actually, like, it might actually help you guys. Um, and it really depends on, it really depends on the specific property. And we've got a team of folks who can, if, if someone expresses interest, I mean, for all of the, almost nine, I think, 89 properties that were submitted in RPV, we had somebody do an analysis on them all. So we can provide you guys with the information. Um, RPV set up their own ranking and prioritization process. Um, and that's, you know, they, they, they decided that it was going to be red-tagged homes first, yellow-tagged homes. Like, it doesn't matter for you guys if the houses are red-tagged, yellow-tagged, if they're not, you know? It, there's a lot of other, you guys get to create how you want to prioritize. If you wanted to prioritize by cost effectiveness, you could do that, right? Like, there's a lot of different things you guys can decide, because it really is not a one-size-fits-all program. The BCA is really just an eligibility requirement and you could pick- The BCA is really just an eligibility requirement and you could pick like three houses, if one of them's not cost-effective, it's the aggregate BCA for the whole project. So you could pick two that have higher benefits to, if there's a, a higher priority project, property for you guys. You know, maybe it's a good spot for a community asset or something, whatever you guys are deciding, you could try to include that and it's all a numbers game, so.
And they have to be contiguous then?
No, no, they don't.
So Juan, again, thank you so much. Our biggest concern from my standpoint is the size of our staff is, and then the fact that you've come down to visit to see what we have. Understanding how we're not the same is super important. If we head down a path that you have low probability of success, throw something at us, okay? Because what I don't want to waste is any energy or time.
Absolutely.
When our staff is twice as big as who's in the room.
Right.
So if you see anything and, but we're looking for how to help, anything that there is available that could help the residents is what we're looking for. And so RPV went that way and that'd be great if we can do that, but if there's something else you're like, that could help you guys. Anything you see, I mean, I know you're, you're busy, but we would really appreciate that and that's where our focus, how to help our residents and how to do it in a way that is for success. Because a part of our other problem is we don't have a lot of money. I mean, are, you're like, I mean, this happens a lot from people from the state, they say, yeah, it was like this little teeny budget of a million to 2 million. Well, that's our budget.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I mean, that, but I will say too, I mean, when I was in Wisconsin, $1 million, I, I think, we did not have very many projects that went over $1 million. So I, it's, sometimes when I come here in California, it's like, it is, it's, it's crazy how big some of the projects are and I think, like, I totally understand what you're saying.
So thank you very much.
So if the, if on the demo acquisition project, the, the property, the land is deed restricted from development, is that correct? And then, so the state's not going to kind of say, well, we want that for affordable housing?
You guys, you guys own it. Which also means like if you do, like, we've had, you know, this happens across the country where someone forgets about it and, you know, every three years, we actually do have to certify that it's still open space or in a open space compatible land use. It happens where a state goes during that certification process and it's like, oh no, somebody built something, you know? Then we would have to work with you guys to fix that, but that, that's really it. So long as it's in that, in a compatible land use that's outlined in the deed restriction. It could be a dog park, it could be a playground, it could be whatever, you know, there's a lot of things that could work, so I, I'm just.
Thank you.
You know, yeah, we're not, we, we're not going to tell you what to do with it. You guys own it, we can't tell you.
No, we appreciate it. All right, well, thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah.
We have the PowerPoint?
Yeah, we got all the PowerPoints, so we're good. So I think we're good. You want to just receive and file? We're not opening this up because we're not going to have individual conversations with her about, because it's really a giant picture of what we can get accomplished. We will try everything that we think might work.
I'll also let you know too, I did write some notes, I mean, there's other programs that other folks at CalOES do coordinate with and I wrote some, some notes about some, some follow-ups. So I'll chase some leads again. I mean, it's, not every program works for every community, so it's worth, I always think it's worth asking and making folks say no. So I've got some, some other leads based on what we saw today that I'll try to follow up with Karina and Samantha about.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
Receive and file.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Cal Water, you guys standing for something else? Exciting?
Thank you, Robin.
All right. What is Cal Water here for? Is this?
I wanted to stick around for one of the items.
Which one?
For public comment, just thinking here.
Yes, for public comment, okay. All right, then, is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
Yes. So moved.
All favor? All right, is there a motion to accept the blue folder items? All favor? All right, public comment, anything that is not on the agenda, Fred, we'll start, sorry, Fred's fast.
Fred Visco, 15th century, well, you wouldn't mind us talk about a couple of things that were on the agenda. I really wanted to talk to the Cal, Cal OEC person. I, I would suggest that as we go forward on this, that we try to, and I know this is a sore spot for some of our council members, but our wildfire mitigation program, which is coming up pretty soon on the agenda, that we try to integrate in, in the bottom of the canyons. A process where we're trying to get money to deal with the land movement situation, which is what's happened, let's just use Klondike Canyon in RPV. So if we go forward, we'll talk about the fire mitigation program on Klondike Canyon, which is not going to go all the way down to the bottom. You run into the problem with the 50-foot down to the bottom with fishing game. My understanding in a conversation prior to this meeting that I had with these folks, by the way, I happen to be down here picking up my free tarp. But it's my understanding that the way RPV got around the problem with the 50-foot. LA County won't, you know, without getting fishing game involved, they were clever enough in their, in their emergency declaration to work around that. So that's why they were able to grade right at the bottom of the canyon and lay the plastic down. They, they were able to do it somehow in their, in their emergency declaration, which preempted fishing game from having any say in this. I'm sure they talked to them, which is what I understand, but they didn't, obviously they couldn't stop them because they did a lot of grading down there. So our fire mitigation programs, both the first one, which we'll talk about coming up, and the next one, which is Klondike, we don't go all the way down to the bottom for that very reason. So we can avoid this 50, 50-foot rule down at the bottom where LA County says you got to go talk to fishing game, okay? That's, that's one of the reasons why we do it that way. So I would suggest as we, as you guys work your way through this, that you try to see somehow integrating in with our wildfire mitigation on the slopes of the canyons, something down at the bottom of the canyons, it doesn't have to be plastic, although I think personally I think that's the way to go. It could be piping. I mean, it could be one, one or maybe both. So that's kind of where my thoughts are, to just throw it out for discussion.
All right, thank you.
Hi. Hello, everybody. I'm Ken Bringus and I'm a resident at 55 Saddleback. I recently had the privilege of meeting Karina. Fortunately, it's because of a problem. We've been here since 2021. So my wife and I and our three kids are currently living in our back house up there on Saddleback while we're trying to renovate the main house. And since about 20, since about, for about a year and a half, we've been, you know, waiting in the permitting process and all that. And it's been, it's been great so far. It's been growing relatively smoothly up till several months ago when we needed to pass fire flow, or fire department planning approvals. And the one thing that they didn't approve was the GPM flow on our fire hydrant, which is, which was, the, the requirement in their code is 1250 GPM. Our, our fire hydrant came in at like 913, which I did some research, I, I talked to Tracy Maestra of Cal Water, supervisor at Cal Water and did the, they make you pay for the test, right? To get the fire flow. And I asked them, I said, they, they basically, fire department basically told us you need to replace that fire hydrant. And so I asked Cal Water and Tracy, if we replace the fire hydrant, can you guarantee that we will meet the code requirement of 1250 GPM? And she told me, no. She said, you will increase it, but it's not going to probably meet that requirement. So I said, well, why, why should we spend $50,000 or however much it costs to replace a fire hydrant? If you can't guarantee that it's, it's going to meet the flow rate for the fire department? So we went to kind of back and forth on it. That hydrant has some history behind it. And two months later, lo and behold, like to our great surprise, Cal Water replaced the hydrant at their expense. And so I was really grateful for that. So I was happy. I called up Tracy, I said, Tracy, can, can you guys, because I've been, I told the fire department, hey, we, we replaced the hydrant, we should be good, right? And the fire department said, well, what's the GPM now? And so went back to Tracy, said, what's the GPM? She goes, well, I don't know, you know, like, so we had to pay for another test to check the GPM on the new hydrant. And it ends up to being 117 GPM points below the code. So we went back to the fire department and said, hey, could you make an exception because it's only 117 GPM points below what you require? And I, then from that point on, I just kept getting nothing. You need to tell them to do this and that. And when I finally got a response, a couple of months later, after back and forth feeling like I'm in between Cal Water and Fire Department, Tracy and Patricia Zapata, who is our, who's on our, the planner on our case, I finally said, you guys need to talk to each other. Because I don't know what to do. I'm, like, fire department is saying, we're not going to budge, it's 1250 GPM. Tracy on Cal Water is saying, no, we meet the requirement. And so I went to one of the planners here and I said, how do I do this? I went to everybody, planner, association. She, I forgot, Stephanie, told me to go to building and safety. So I called up building and safety and said, here's the problem. And building and safety, the guy over there told me, oh, so your, your fire hydrant doesn't meet the code? Oh, that means all your houses, all the houses on that block are going to burn down. Like, that's verbatim what he told me. I'm like, well, that's not good. And it made me realize that maybe we, it's not just our house that has a problem. Like, so I went to, did some research, found out that a couple of fire hydrants on our block, Saddleback, they don't meet the code either. So I went back to Tracy, I said, Tracy, it doesn't meet the code. She said, no. We set those, the pressure on those fire hydrants so that there'd be enough, those homes are not going to burn down. I'm like, could you like call up the fire department and try to figure this out? So I'm going back and forth. Finally, the fire department, making a long story short, they said to me, okay, we have a solution. You can, we'll allow you to put sprinklers in your house. But you, before you do that, you need to go back to Cal Water and ask them for an estimate, I have this in writing. Ask them for an estimate to replay, to upgrade the hydrant system on Saddleback. And, and I said, well, is that just so you can get my hydrant to put out 117 more GPM points to meet your code? Yeah. So I go to Tracy, I called her up, Tracy, they want me to ask you for an estimate. And she said, we're absolutely not going to do that. I said, can, then can you call her, you know, I'm back to square one. So now I've got, I've gotten to a point where I'm trying to get them to talk and I'm trying to get the fire department to make a decision because Cal Water has a different standard, obviously. Fire department won't budge on their standard because they haven't been giving me any responses, really. So I'm waiting and I feel like I'm in a stalemate. So I guess I just, I came to finally, finally came to Karina, brought all this information. And it doesn't make any sense to me that we're being held up, the very last thing we need for our building permit is been waiting for four, four or five months just because of this code regulation. And I haven't had a chance, I, now I just feel like I don't have anywhere to go other than to you and to you guys. And so I appreciate you hearing, I, I'm simply just registering an appeal that the council use leverage, whatever power you have to at least. Okay, so this is not just an issue for my home. Obviously, I want, we want to continue our building project because we've been waiting for a while to try to get this thing going. But I'm realizing now it might be just an issue around, across the whole Saddleback, you know, street. Because if anybody on Saddleback wants to renovate, they're going to run into the same issue with fire flow. And I already know one project that was, that they decided they weren't going to even bother pursuing it because of fire flow issues on our street. So that's all I, I really wanted to say. And, you know, I really appreciate you hearing me out. I'm hoping something can be done soon because, like I said, it doesn't seem like this is a huge issue compared to all the other stuff you guys are dealing with. But I thought I'd do, I'd say something because, you know, I am a resident here and I do want to, we, we are in the process of building our dream home, which honestly is only 800 square feet of addition. So if you look at what we're trying to do, we're not trying to build this massive project, we're just trying to add 800 square feet to our home. And it seems like this is being held up unnecessarily and it, it's a little frustrating when I see other homes that are on other parts of the neighborhood that haven't been, that have waited for just a few months and, and already constructing. Because I know that the fire flow in their area met the code, but on our street it does, it doesn't, and it's like that far. And Cal Water already spent 50, 80,000, however much it costs to build, to put in a new hydrant. So I'm like, now they're asking, the fire department's asking them to do more, I, I don't really know what to do. This isn't, it's almost like it's not my problem anymore. But it's holding us back. So that's all I needed to.
All right, thank you very much. Are we solving this?
No, I, no, I just wanted to have Cal Water here just to listen in on this discussion. I've already have reached out to the fire department to see what we can do. And I, I've reached out to Cal Water to see what we can do, kind of learn and, but that's why I had to stick around and.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Cal Water? Ah, they're nice, they, we can, great. All right, James? But we can, hang on a second, ask them if they can stand outside.
Very quick comment about ownership issues. I couldn't help myself, I apologize. It was related to an agenda item. Sounds like the city has held up about, a couple of the council members about the city owning the property when it's bought back for the buyback program, if we were to qualify. A lot of the properties are on the south side next to the nature preserve. Ours is one of those, is completely adjacent to it. I was wondering if it could be looked into, what would happen if it would be leased or bequeathed or something to the nature preserve? So that some other government entity or association could have ownership of it and alleviate the burden to the city while preserving the open spaces. Maybe there's benefits to the city about taxes or credits or swaps or something. But it seems to make sense that there's acres and acres of nature preserve that can't be built. And why? Because I understand the Army Corps of Engineers set off a landslide a long time ago when they were building Crenshaw, possibly. And so it couldn't be built on and so it became a nature preserve. Wouldn't it make sense to have the landslide homes that they crept up into become part of that nature preserve? So there might be, and that works for homes that are maybe, if, if they're willing, adjacent to the preserve. And then what about their other uses, horses, et cetera, for ones that aren't contiguous? So just would ask that that be looked into.
We're not going to let that stop us.
I'm not hung up about it, by the way.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're good. Thanks, James.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, then we're going to close that part of the public comment, consent calendar.
Before you take action on the consent calendar, I just want to mention that the minutes in your packet there have been amended. So if you make a motion, just make sure you add language that, with the amended minutes. Are just changing, there, there was a mistake made where Dr. Black was mentioned as a no vote on every item, but he was, he's supposed to be absent on every item, so. Member, Mayor Pro Tem Derringer for pointing that out.
Do we have a motion on 8A through E?
I move to approve the consent calendar with the amendments just advised.
All favor? Okay, we're moving on to public hearing, a public hearing regarding the nuisance basement at 20 Portuguese Bend, isn't it gone?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So staff's recommendation on this item is that you actually not open the public hearing because the situation has been resolved, so.
Then.
On the agenda, it was publicly noticed, so in case anyone wanted to comment, I don't believe there's anyone there, so no formal action is taken.
No, no, there's, okay. So all we got to do, do we do anything or just move on?
If you guys, if you guys would like to open public comment, you're free to do that. You guys can just move on.
Okay, happens. All right. Then we're moving on to old business. Discuss potential approval of a 25% local match requirement, approximately $405,000 for the 2023 submitting application to federal FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant to address fire fuel abatement in Klondike Canyon.
Good evening, Mayor and Council again. Uh, so this item is coming back to you for the third or fourth time. Uh, and I'll keep my, uh, my presentation brief. Uh, we applied for this grant last year. We hired, uh, to the points made by our representative from Cal OES, we did hire a outside consultant, as we have done in the past for hazard mitigation grants. Uh, this one is similar to the existing one that was mentioned earlier, uh, which is in the Paintbrush Canyon area. This is in the Klondike Canyon area. Um, our sub-application was submitted to Cal OES in 2023. Uh, Cal OES reviewed it. Uh, and in April of this year, they put us on a waitlist due to a lack of funding. Uh, with that notice, they told us that if any funding became available, uh, that they would notify us. Uh, that's the stage we're at right now. But as it has come to you previously, uh, before City Manager Bonyalis was here, when interim City Manager David Reddy was here, we brought this to you for, uh, to discuss the 25% match, uh, that we would be required to set aside in future budgets. Um, you decided to postpone that conversation, uh, until the new year. We brought it back in January. Uh, and then you asked us again to hold that conversation over until we got any forward momentum or approval from Cal OES and/or FEMA. Uh, as I said, it was waitlisted, so we didn't bring it back. Uh, in recent weeks, um, Cal OES reached out to us. They do now have funding, but they also need to know within the next week if we are able to meet that 25% local match. And so it's back to you tonight for ideally final consideration as to whether, does the city want to obligate funds as we prepare for our fiscal year 25, 26, 26, 27, you know, 27, 28 budgets or not. Uh, so with that said, available for any questions.
Okay. Any questions? Pat?
I just want to clarify, are we talking, what's the total amount of our match? And is it each of the three years for the match? Or is this a total figure? It wasn't?
So based on the sub-application amount, the total local match would be four, approximately 405,250 dollars. Um, the way these particular grants go, if we look at the, um, the Paintbrush Canyon one as an example, it's broken into two phases. So phase one is an environmental review. Um, that, that Paintbrush Canyon one, we're about three or four years into that process. Uh, and it's, it, right now, it is on hold as a result of the fact that we don't have a local hazard mitigation plan. So we're in a waiting pattern to get into phase two. But the environmental review is lengthy. Uh, it's not as big of a spend as the phase two where it's the construction execution portion. Um, so that's why I said you would break, you would probably break up the local match over a period of time. It would not be one chunk in one given year per se. Um, but it would be a commitment. If we were going to take on this grant, much like the other ones we have, uh, we would commit to meeting that local match. Um, now, one other thing I should mention that Cal OES staff said to us is that the funding is, there is no, sometimes in this equation of a Cal OES FEMA grant, um, you can ask for additional funding if, you know, costs are going up, which just happens. You know, when we applied for some of our other grants, um, you know, three, four years ago, there was an assumption that costs would reach a certain amount. But with inflation, you know, things outside of the city's control, costs do go up. And, you know, we'll talk about that even on the next item, uh, related to our Eastfield Drive, uh, grant. Um, Cal OES in this case did say to us that there is no room for additional costs. We would have to stay within the window of what the sub-application is asked for, but we can downsize the scope of the project. So, um, the footprint of the project, the amount of construction or plant, new plantings, demolition, whatever. So, uh, we would just have to stay within the amount that the sub-application had requested.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Um, I guess how much, the, for the next one, I know we're not discussing it, but we're using, um, funds that we have from 28. So.
I'll get into that a little bit.
But, but I mean, there's nothing, um, left of that, that we could, I mean.
No, no, no. So that, that's totally, that, that is totally different. And, you know, you, you would think of this as, you know, making an investment in a hazard mitigation, you know, or, you know, grant, this is specific to, you know, lessening fires, right?
Right.
Uh, it's an investment on the city's behalf, you know, to meet that obligation with the federal government covering 75% of the cost.
Okay. But what I was trying to get to, that, are the money sufficient from the 28 funds for that project? Or are we going to have to put in money from our general fund to finish that one?
I, I, I would, since that's the next one, I, I would, I would answer that question in our next.
Okay, I know. Well, it's kind of hard to know if we have money for that, if we're going to, if I don't know if we're going to be having money that we have to put to the project we're already in.
Right now, right now, the Eastfield Drive and the Crest Road local matches are being met with our Rule 28, uh, funds.
Okay.
Yeah, that's how those two grants were originally designed.
No, I understand that's how it designed, but no, costs go up. And if, that's what I'm saying. If it's, if it's still calculated to be sufficient, that's all.
We, we don't know until we continue, you know, where we track costs as we're going along, but we, we never know. I'll just use the Crest Road one as an example. When we went out for construction bids, you know, uh, our engineer's report was far lower than what the two bids came in at. So, uh, you know, and those two bids were separated by about a $450,000 delta. And so naturally, we went with the lowest responsible bidder. But, um, there's, there's no way for us, as you know, when we go through any bid process, right? There's no way for us to know what the market is bearing at that time until we get responses back.
Okay. All right.
Any questions? Questions? So I have, my question is, one, we haven't, we've, the first one has, nothing has happened. We're now years into this thing. I understand we're doing paperwork and we're doing whatever, but nothing has improved.
Correct, because it's been in the, in phase one, which is the environmental review.
I, I understand.
And, and now nothing's happening because we don't have an approved local hazard mitigation plan to allow us to move into the phase two. So we're in a holding pattern.
So here's my thing is, if we, if we say yes to this, how long could, does this get held in limbo? Or can we hold it in limbo so we can actually have 400 grand to pay? That's one question. Two, I never thought that the 25% could be paid by anybody but us.
Correct.
But can the 25% be paid by the residents? Since that's what they just did next door? So if we can pay the 25% out of the residents, maybe that's a different way to approach it. My concern is, it's another project and we're about to hopefully have other projects that are more pertinent for this moment in time versus, if the, if the land movement didn't happen, I would, kind of a different approach on this. But right now, my problem is we're going to eat up some money here that we might need for everything else.
Sure. So let me answer, there was a few questions in there.
I'm sure there's a question in there somewhere.
So. So let me, let me, let me start with the, the timeline aspect. So i- if you were, hypothetically, if you were to approve the, the 25% contribution local match, um, then we would take that back to Cal OES. They would then, um, they would remove us from the waitlist, or we would still technically be on the waitlist, but they would forward all our sub-application to FEMA. And then it would go through about a six to nine month review process at FEMA. Uh, so we would not have, let's just, you know, say, we probably wouldn't have approval till fall of, um, next year from FEMA. Uh, so we wouldn't even start phase one until winter of next year, uh, possibly. Um, which means we would then, staff would ask for a, a portion, we would budget into the 25, 26 fiscal year, a certain amount to make sure that we could cover a local match, a portion of, um, well, that, that we can cover the consulting costs for the environmental review. Because we, we don't, we don't really get reimbursed very much in the phase one portion.
And then what's the consequences if we say, no, thank you right now? We already have a fully formed, put together thing that passed the last time. Can we resubmit it? Two years from now, or three years from now, or five years from now, when we have some money?
So I'm, I'm not an expert here, uh, but I, I would assume that our sub-application is complete. We would, we could use the same materials to apply again. Uh, we might have to revise some things. But then again, to the point that was made by Robin, uh, we, instead of utilizing outside consultants, we could, uh, work, you know, directly with Cal OES staff to ensure that any future sub-application, uh, could be submitted, you know. And as she said, their NOIs are, are rolling. So if we have a project, we, uh, we could do that. I could also talk with Cal OES staff and see if a project could just be held in a waitlist, um, uh, area to wait for, uh, funding and/or, you know, different conditions, uh, you know, as you guys see fit, where you want to, um, use your own, use your resources for other more important things, as you stated.
Yeah, because for me personally is, one, if we can push this down the road as far as possible, would be best. Two, we haven't seen any results from the first one. And my other problem is the HOA spent a bunch of money on Portuguese Bend to clean it all up and make it whatever. And the residents were supposed to make it continue, whatever. And it's already all grown back. So I always feel like on this, unless someone's staying after it, it's a short-term gain for a lot of money that we need to spend on something else. But, okay.
Do you have a question?
Yep.
Fair. Do you know, our sunk, other than staff time, do you know what our sunk costs in this process are?
This particular one? I want to say, uh, it's $30,430 for, not, not including staff time, but that was for MNS, uh, you know, to help us with the, the NOI process and then the sub-application process.
I'm going to open public comment. Fred?
Oh, yeah, I've got some comments. Yeah, Fred Visco, 15th century. So as I understand it, um, the reason that, I'll call it the Paintbrush Canyon project, although it's more than just Paintbrush Canyon. The reason that we're now hung up is that FEMA sat on the project for so long, our city hazard mitigation plan expired. The one we passed on January 16th, uh, 20, 2019, right? So, and we have to do it every five years. So it, January of 2024, we should have had that plan redone. They didn't tell us, although it's buried, I realize now, reading everything, it's kind of buried in the paperwork. Well, I went back and looked at the city hazardous mitigation plan in 2019 and saw it buried in there. So you have to have an updated and approved city hazard mitigation plan before FEMA will give you anything. And so that's, so they delayed, they sat on this thing, the Paintbrush Canyon, long enough so our already approved plan expired. And now they're saying, we can't give, go forward until you get the hazard mitigation plan going, taken care of. My question is, how far down the road are we? How much longer will it be before we get our new city hazard mitigation plan up and running? Question number one. And to that extent, even if you commit tonight to the Klondike project, you've got another year or so before they'll even consider you because you don't have a hazard mitigation plan. Where you have to start spending money. So, and I know there's a lot of issues with this Klondike plan, one of which is this replanning of 9,000 native plants. And by the way, there's a typo right below that. It says 37,000, although it's really 9,000. So take a look, make sure you correct that typo. Uh, in the same page, page eight. Uh, so one paragraph says 9,000 native plants, the other says 37, but the cost summary is 9,000. So I think we're okay. It's just a screw up there. So I know that's an issue. We didn't have to do that in the Paintbrush fire mitigation issue. We didn't have to replant. I know there's some issues on that, but in my mind, replacing invasive, highly flammable plants with native less flammable plants, don't use lemon berry, please, native, native less is a better, it's, we're better off. Okay? We're, we're much more, we're better off. And again, as I was saying in the open session, these, this fire mitigation isn't going to go down all the way to the bottom of the canyon. So it's really kind of stabilizing the hill too. So I don't have any problem with putting in 8,000, uh, 9,000 native plants. But I'm pretty sure you're not going to be able to buy 9,000. Because by the time this gets done, instead of 20 bucks a plant, it's going to be, who knows what, $200 a plant.
$400.
$400 a plant. So you, so you, you end up reducing the scope. So it won't be that many anyway. So the way I look at this, it's not perfect. It's a long drawn out process. But when it's done, it'll be better than what's in there now. And by the time it gets done, because we still have to get this mitigation plan updated, right before anything's going to happen, quite frankly, as far as funding or anything going forward. So, and that's, I guess I'm really annoyed at that. That they, they slow walked us until we, our mitigation plan expired. And now we're, now we're, we have to go back and get that done and get the Paintbrush Canyon part of this. It's really annoying to me. I wish there was somebody that could write a, write a letter to my congressman. Somebody, they wouldn't pay any attention to me. You guys, you guys hardly pay attention to me. So, so in any event, it's not perfect. Yeah, I hear what you're saying. Trust me, you're not going to spend $100,000 next year on this thing. You're not going to spend 10 bucks on this thing next year, probably. Because you've still got to get your city hazard mitigation plan done before any of this happens. So I, I would suggest you bite the bullet and go, I know Dr. Black would vote no. But I would suggest you bite the bullet and go forward and, and do the best you can, get this mitigation plan updated, which you have to do anyway, and then see where you're at. And, um, you know, that's my feeling. And integrate it in with something down at the bottom of the canyon. Try to get FEMA money to take care of the water at the bottom of the canyon. Plastic maybe, or pipe, something. You send it south of the border. Because they'll be happy to take it if we, if we pipe it or plastic it. Okay?
Thank you.
And the other thing that came up in my conversation with the folks before the meeting, I, again, happen to be here picking up my free tarp. I wanted to know how the heck, maybe I'm repeating myself, but how the heck RPV get away with fishing game? It was from their, it was from their emergency declaration. RPV was smart enough to include in their emergency declaration enough of, of that plan that they've been talking about for years, that, that they were able to, once the, once the governor approved the emergency declaration, they were able to circumvent fishing game. So they didn't have to get approval from fishing game. Because as you know, they look at everything that's within 50 feet of the bottom of the canyon. Whether it's a flowing stream or a non-flowing stream, they just want to look at 50 feet within the county. And that's what the county says. If you go within 50 feet of the bottom of the canyon, you got to go talk to fishing game. Okay? But they, RPV was able to circumvent it because of their emergency declaration. And I know Jeff was commenting, well, I have to know what, whether there's any kind of benefit in doing this emergency declaration. That was one that I found out much later after our topic.
Thank you. Anybody else? James?
I, I just ask that the council focus on spending money on the problems that actually exist 100% that have already occurred as opposed to the problems that may exist in the future. That can be, as much as you can postpone it as, as possible would be great to really run the issues to the ground about, are these landslide issues something that can be pursued? Yes or no? And once you reach that decision, then go to the other issues. And once you reach that decision, then go to the other issues, if there's money left. Because I'd hate to see a situation where the money's spent, and then we don't have enough money to address people that are actually hurting, not potentially hurting in the future. Thank you for your service.
Anybody else? Then I'm going to close the public hearing.
I'm a little confused, or not certain, about the questions you were asking about the options for the future. Can we just postpone anything, any decision, and not, I guess, fall out of the position, not have to spend any more money to get back to where we are right now?
Yeah, I mean, my first choice, and do we have to decide today? Is today the last day? Is this why we're here today?
I'm bringing it to you for action, because I need to report back to CalOES next week.
Can I ask questions, and then do this again in the first week of January, second week of January?
Maybe Robin, she's still in the party.
This, so.
Want Robert to come up?
You guys want me to answer some questions?
Yeah, can she come up? Yeah, come on up.
Thank you for not getting back on your flight to Sacramento.
No, she's still.
My slide shows even still up on the computer.
All right, so here's questions. One, can we kick this thing, how do we kick this thing down the, because we got a money problem.
Right.
400 grand is a ton of money to us, and we have to, there's a whole bunch of stuff we have to spend money on. Is, one, is there a way to kick this thing down the road?
You guys definitely don't need to make a decision tonight, no. Just know that there are, so, we have, so for all the projects that are in that funding opportunity, because I think Christian mentioned that there's a waiting list, so we might go to other communities and also present that, hey, we've got funding available, so if you guys aren't ready to take action, that's fine. The funding opportunity also isn't going to be closing for another several years, you know? So, you guys don't have to make any decisions today. I will also, I'll just caution you that the longer you wait, another community might.
They're going to take the money.
Yeah, but I, off the top of my head, I don't know how much is available, because, I mean, to, this is the same type of conversation that a lot of communities are having, so we've gotten a lot of communities who submitted things. There was a huge queue that, you know, because of COVID, and then some, we had immediate needs funding, I think, going to effect two or three times since you guys submitted the application. That's just one, like the disaster relief fund runs out of money, so Congress has to reappropriate money so we can expend it. A lot of communities are withdrawing, so I, like I said, if you, I would imagine that you will have the opportunity, I just, I can't guarantee, right? But you do not have to make a decision today. We're not going to be like, oh, they didn't get back to us tomorrow, we're going to the next community. You know, your grant analyst might check back in with you in a week or two.
I mean, so honestly, from my viewpoint is, one, if I can push this as far away as possible, I mean, within reason. Two, because we got to fix the missing piece, number, I mean, that's a big deal, and we have to get that done, which I don't know where we are on that.
We can give you a quick update on that.
Okay, we're super excited about that. And so, we'll get to that. But then also, as what RPV has now done is an important piece of this. This canyon is like right in the middle of one of our biggest problems. And if we can fix this part, and then add that part somehow, which we got to go ask them how the heck they did it, and make sure we can make all those pieces line up.
Yeah, and I mean, for me, because I didn't go, I did not look at the scopes of the two different projects, because I think you guys have touched on both of them. I mean, I can, I can get some more details and follow up with Christian, so if you guys, I don't know when your next meeting is, or if.
Two weeks.
Yeah, I, we can, we can follow up with you about the specifics of both of those. Obviously, I know, one, the phase, I can also answer the question, I think that was asked before, with, since we're waiting between Phase 1 and Phase 2, if you guys do decide to withdraw, you still get reimbursement and all that stuff for your Phase 1 deliverables. You're obviously waiting for, did you guys already get that already? I think you did.
For the other project?
Yeah.
We haven't gotten, I think, full reimbursement?
Right, you guys would get full.
Because we're in the, the waystation period, we have to enter Phase 2 before we get continued reimbursements from Phase 1.
Right. So, I think we would be able to reimburse all the eligible expenses, even before the Phase 2 stuff would, so long as it's in your Phase 1 scope of work, we could reimburse that. And then you could use all of those Phase 1 materials to submit for a future sub-application. So, I think to answer that question before, to substantiate what Christian also said about the other project.
Point is, we used to never ask for anything, because everyone left us alone, and now they don't leave us alone, so now we're asking for everything.
Right.
So, because of that, I look at it, and I say, now that we've done this, and we're this far in, and once we find, fix the paperwork problem, from my standpoint at least, I'd like to try one of these things to see what actually happens. Like, because we don't get, we don't, we, we got to get to a finish line on something, so then we can see it and say, wow, that did work, this is what we need to do and learn from it. Because right now, that's really the only one we've ever done this way, except for the telephone poles. And the telephone poles, we're using 28 money, which is going away, so it's perfect for us.
Right.
So.
Telephone, and the undergrounding project is something, that's not a, that's something that people know how to do, get done, you know, the processes are there, as opposed to something like this, we're kind of invent, inventing it, it's, each situation.
Right.
Is, is different. So, it makes this even more challenging and something, even if it wasn't rural 20 money.
Okay, so, does anyone have any other questions?
I don't know if all the council members know that Klondike Canyon has already been lined through RPV?
How far up does it go?
I don't know exactly, but I think it comes up to our boundary, our border.
Because that was the question that I had asked, is how far up, so that if we were, if we were able to go down, would it connect? And so, I was actually going to talk to Cookshank about that tomorrow night.
Okay. All right. Any other question? Because, good?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Problem. I'm just still, still in the background, if you guys have any more mitigation things.
So, to address the question about the hazard mitigation plan that we've been discussing, we are currently in the RFE process. We do have a member of our council who is on the ad hoc, who will be participating in the review and interviewing of the consultants to work on the plan with the other three agencies, and that's Councilwoman Marsh. She is on the ad hoc, if you recall, the PPSC took that on under their purview. So, that's the regional law group. So, hopefully in the next, I think, what was it, January?
Yep, mid-January, they'll be doing RFPs and interviews.
What's the connection between the hazard mitigation plan and the?
We can't do it without the hazard mitigation, that's why we're jammed up on the first one.
It's a, it's a peninsula for the three cities altogether, so, so then we are joined with them, so ours isn't going to be done until the whole three cities is done.
So, Councilwoman Marsh will be on that panel.
When is it going to be done?
Hold on, hold on.
I'm sorry.
So, we're getting, we're getting, we're getting there.
Yeah, yeah.
Is, so, we go to RFP, so we're going to be done 2025?
And I think Sam can come in and do that for you.
Yeah, approximately a year.
Okay. All right, then, all right, here's.
Anybody else has expired besides ours? Or is it the one plan for the whole peninsula?
So, ours expired, I believe PVE has expired, and I think William Hill State's will expire in March. So, they will be expired.
Well, if it's the same, if it's a group plan, how could they expire at different times?
Adopted, right?
It's when it was adopted.
Have you seen how a single jurisdictional plan, you're now participating in the multi major?
We're just going to bring her back for every meeting. We'll get you a house, James, sell over your house.
I know, this was decided back in 2023, if I recall, I was in here at that time, but when they decided to move forward with the jurors. And it actually was presented to the PPSC.
I think the idea is, is that each city shares so many similar characteristics, that getting all four cities in sync with their LHMPs would be much more cost-effective than each city doing it alone. And then they were able to secure the grant funding to help us do that, and then you'll have every city in sync going forward from here on out.
So, this includes PVE?
All four cities.
Well, RHE, RPV and us.
Yeah.
Someone like to make a motion to kick this thing down the road and confirm?
Is that a motion?
Not supposed to make motions, because.
Yeah, but I mean, what is the motion?
Well, I'll make one. I'd like to make a motion that we push this, we talk to CalOES, and we make sure that they're cool with it, and we find out how far can we push it as a diminishing return on us being able to reinsert it back in.
I think, I think we should just make a motion to bring it back on, on our agenda when staff indicates that there's something we need to do.
We can do that, too. It just, it's every time, it's like six inches of paper that's.
Yeah, we can do it, do it with less paper, but if we could just come, come back with an update, let's say, in the month of February, or something like that.
Hands, so do we, those are three separate, distinct motions?
Let's just, no, mine's horrible, so let's go with B's.
I mean, this, open-handed, when they have some information, they'll bring it back to us. In the meantime, they have the direction from us, that they want to check out and talk with Robin about the scope of the projects, how to make this work.
Yeah, that's right, right, it's, hang on, so just so I'm clear, so staff, the, the
motion is to table this and continue to explore and ensure that there's no negative impacts for not going through with it, and then of course, staff is to bring it back to the council when they deem appropriate.
Yes.
Before, there's a thing, could I just offer a friendly amendment to that, that there be a date assigned to it, whether you want to say, by the last council meeting in February? Things fall through the cracks sometimes if you don't have a date on them. And I think that it's too important to not have a date. I don't want to see it fall through the cracks.
It's not his motion anyway, so.
Okay, I mean, my motion, I can say honor before the last meeting in February, with an update.
I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, that was fun.
Make sure Jim's here.
He's going to go, no, it's simpler. Okay, all right, receive and file a verbal update on the outdoor emergency siren project, citywide.
Nope, 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 got to go to 13A.
More paper.
Business, correct? I always thought we could get past that one.
13A, correct?
Yes. Approve a professional service agreement for Emparella Services, Inc., to provide engineering services for the 20B portion of the Eastfield Fire Prevention Power Line for the Mount, not to exceed $117,899, there's a made-up number, from FEMA Hazard Mitigation, the city manager to execute the agreement and find the project category exempt from CEQA.
Evening again, mayor and council. Tonight's meeting is brought to you by CalOES and FEMA. So, this, this item is specific to the Eastfield Drive Utility Undergrounding Project. We've reached the portion of the project where the design phase is completed, both for the Edison 20A portion and the city 20B portion. The city, because we have to do that 20B portion on our own, we have to hire an engineer, services company, to help us finalize, take it from the designs presented to us from both Edison and the three telecoms, and then we have to basically have further designs done, because on this particular project, we are connecting from the trench, the joint trench that everybody's in, to the actual residential houses. So, there will be conduit going from roadside to all the houses along that stretch of Eastfield, and per Edison's designs, four of those houses require panel relocation. So, we did this with Crest Road, where we hired a civil firm to help us with that before we went to construction bid. So, we are in that intermediary stage right now. We have to have all our work done by October of next year, unless FEMA extends the award date further out, and then we'll get another five to six months. With that said, Empirical did come in with the lowest proposed response. We did then negotiate that down to the 100, it may seem made up, but we were able to negotiate down their hours, because they had added in probably a little bit too much than what we required for the project. Once Empirical gets through their process, and we've given them a very tight deadline to be done by February, because at that point, we do need to get into the construction bidding process, and then have that take place and be completed probably by August. So, that way, we have, we still have a little window for the utilities to, to pull their wires and remove the overheads by October. So, any questions, happy to answer.
Just quickly, the types of adjustments that were made, I don't need you to go into specifics, but I didn't compare what they, they were, were they, they weren't significant?
Yeah, if you look at like their cost sheets, they had a lot of time allocated on the upfront to meetings and administrative costs, and, you know, things that we don't really require. On the backend, they had a lot of time allocated towards things that would actually be, you know, like they had traffic control things in there, that's actually going to be part of the construction bid, not part of what they need to do. There was some regulatory stuff they thought they needed to do, but they don't need to do that, that would also be part of it. So, Alan and I just really tried to chop it up and say, this is unnecessary. We would have done the same with the other company as well, but their proposal was, you know, 20,000 some odd dollars higher, so we didn't have that conversation with them.
Thanks for finding those savings.
First of all, yeah, excellent job saving money. Two, if they're replacing the meters and not just relocating the panels, we're finding that meters in California are taking us six to eight months to get meters. So, if you have to be done by October, make sure we're ordering those meters right now.
Yeah, these are panel relocations.
Just make sure it's not a piece of hardware that you got to buy right now, with the, how the insurance companies treating all the meters right now? Everyone's replacing their meters, and the wait is enormous right now.
I will have a, well, tomorrow is our monthly utility meeting, so I can always ask our Edison counterparts here about that, but my understanding is that it's just panel relocation, it's not upgrading panels, it's not changing out their meters, you know, the meter would relocate.
But just the box, it's taken us, it's taken us seven, eight months to get those suckers right now. It's the craziest thing I've ever seen. Anyone like to open a public comment? Public comment, seeing none, close public comment. Motion?
It's, nobody's saying it, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. See a verbal update on the outdoor emergency siren?
No, matters from City Council.
Nah, oh, you have matters?
I, I just have to ask the council, because I know we need to schedule the issue for upcoming conferences and meetings for the next month, I want to make sure that's on the agenda, and then ask that the $75 that you allocated for December be applied for January, because I discovered that the event tomorrow is actually free, one of the free, few free programs that they do. But there is another meeting in January 9th, which is before our meeting on the 13th, so I want to make sure we definitely have it on the agenda to cover that. So, I think that's something that we can do administratively, because it's within the bounds of the prior decision.
Okay, we're good with it.
I just want to reemphasize the need to get information about generators, because last night I got my ear bent from affected residents.
I believe we have on our, on our planning agenda, that is scheduled for sometime in either January or the first of February, but we can always reevaluate.
You can hear a lot of these things going on, it's so loud that.
And they're going to 2 o'clock in the morning now.
And I think it's going to get worse as winter and the days get shorter, and once it starts raining and people having to use them even more. I have just a quick thing. Do we think we are going to need to see if we have some day in the rest of the month of December that we're going to need to have a form, or anything that we see on the horizon coming up that's going to need? We don't have any meetings scheduled, but I'm asking staff if, if you're seeing anything that you think.
So, right now, we don't. But I can work with the mayor to, if it comes up, they need to, you know, anything can happen next week, right? But I can work with the mayor to see if we can add on additional meeting, and we can circle back, and I can send out a request.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think anybody wants to have, to have one, I just want to make sure, if you knew, like, this, as it turned out, we didn't have to do that one, but something like that, if you thought there was something that was coming up, you want to make sure that we. I don't thi, yeah, I don't think anybody wants to ha, to have one, I just want to make sure, if you knew, like, this, as it turned out, we didn't have to do that one, but something like that, if you thought there was something that was coming up, you want to make sure that we, that we, over the holidays, that at least three of us would be available at some point to make. So, but if you don't see anything, if that's, that's, that's not likely.
And it doesn't take much to schedule one, okay, so we don't need to put one pencil it in, well, I just thought we need to pencil something in now, then we need to maybe throw it in and we can always take it off.
I'm seeing that we don't need any, let's not worry about it. Okay, um, we'll get in trouble later. Alright, uh, is anything else from the council?
Yeah.
Hearing none, now matters from staff. We're gonna, outdoor siren.
Good evening, Mayor Piper and city council. Um, on October sixteenth, HQE performed their first siren test, um, and they, uh, started the test by testing the individual speakers individually, and then they, uh, performed a test with a group of them. And this was a successful test, uh, they found the system after installation to be fully operational, so, uh, we proceeded to a second test on November sixth. Um, this test period was approximately three hours. The first half, uh, staff and HQE, uh, team members went out on site and, um, they set off, uh, multiple sirens. Shortly after, they realized that the, um, the volume was set to ten percent, not at a hundred percent, and so they reconfigured and, uh, set it to a hundred percent. Um, after this particular test, they determined that, um, after doing different ranges, different tones, and using the voice command, um, they found that the five hundred to eight hundred hertz range was best suited for the Rolling Hills topography.
It was what?
It was best suited for the, the topography here with the canyons and, and that, so. Um, on December third, uh, they did an impedance testing on each of the speakers to ensure that the five hundred to eight hundred range, um, would sound at the maximum volume, uh, without overloading the amplifiers. The voltage and impedance balance was not to HQE satisfaction, and, um, unfortunately, they had to cancel the test. So, uh, the team determined that a modification to the firmware would be beneficial to optimize the power being applied to the speakers at the sown, the siren tone frequency of eight hundred hertz, which is best suited for the terrain here. Uh, this modification, modification will ensure that the loudspeakers are operational at the maximum rated power while at the same time protecting the integrity and longevity of the equipment. HQE is currently working on the adjustment and staff will, um, circle back with them at the beginning of the year, will probably do a test mid-January. And, um, from there, HQE would like to, um, do a Q and A session with our residents, um, staff are working on either doing that as a, um, a public presentation or a webinar. And, um, they are also working on a, um, FAQ, uh, sheet for our residents, so. I'm gonna hand it over to Christian, he'll talk about the issues.
Okay, so Sam just mentioned, uh, she said that they would like to do another test in January, and some of you may be saying, well, our contract expires at the end of, uh, this year. So, as part of our discussions, uh, with HQE, uh, in trying to get this dialed in and performing to the expectations of the council and the community, um, they have requested, uh, an extension of our current agreement to the end of February. So, uh, we're just kind of alerting you to that tonight, that is something that, um, the city attorney and the city manager can, uh, can draft and execute, uh, per the contract agreement, and the city attorney, I'm sure, can speak to that if he wants to.
Correct, yeah, the, the key point, of course, is not a single extra penny will be spent from the city, so, 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 so of course, extending it to make sure that it's a job well done. Once again, not, did not need council approval, of course, Christian, being diligent, was gonna u, update you guys just to ensure that there's no surprises, so we're all good to go on that.
Correct, and this is just an extension of term, not an extension of cost. With that said, though, um, as I think we brought back to you repeatedly throughout this process, HQE has been a great partner. They are committed to staying within the cap of, of what we had originally agreed to, and, um, they informed us this past week that, uh, not only were they asking for the extension to make sure that we get everything right, as I said, to the expectations, but that, uh, they wanted to award the city of Rolling Hills, uh, their two thousand and twenty-four Community Safe Grant, uh, which is actually, um, a really great give from them. So, the Community Safe Grant is an initiative created by, uh, the veterans of HQE Systems. They select one community each year to receive cutting-edge technology aimed at enhancing life-saving, uh, capabilities and resilience. In this case, uh, I mentioned this in a previous update to you, uh, it's giving us, uh, for free, uh, the safe network. So it's basically installing on each of the three poles, a system that would then be able to communicate out to residential homes here in the community, um, so that people could hear the sirens inside if they so wish. So part of the components are the hardware that would go on the poles, and then at a deeply discounted cost, I mentioned to you, they have, um, individual radios, but they, they have screens and, and whatnot so that, you know, it can communicate and flash to people that have hearing disabilities or whatnot. But it would be able to replicate the tones inside the house, uh, so that way, anybody who was indoors could also, you know, purchase a unit and then, uh, be able to hear that inside as well as, you know, they would be able to outside. So, their estimation is that it's a total value of over sixty-five thousand dollars that they would be granting to the city, uh, in addition to everything that we have already, um, contracted with them to do. So, uh, and they feel that they would be able to do all that by the end of February. We will continue to report back because as their engineers, to Sam's point, as we, as we get to the next round of testing where we can actually see what, uh, the five to eight hundred, uh, hertz range sounds like, uh, they may make some other changes to the orientation of the speakers. They have even talked about maybe down in, uh, the triangle, adding, uh, an additional, uh, pole or something to make sure that the sound is propagating the way it's supposed to. So, uh, I don't have any specifics on that now, but they are in an engineering design phase as they kind of reevaluate, uh, you know, information based on the tests that they did so far, and we'll have more information and report back probably, uh, late January.
For Sam, do, do I understand that the last test a week ago, that there were no tones emitted from the, the towers?
That's correct, yep, yep, they, um, they did their impedance testing and they found that it just wasn't set at the, um, the balance wasn't correct for the, um, the, I guess it's the, the resistance and the voltage.
Is there a non-too technical reason for that?
Um, I think that, um, so there's the factory settings and, um, there's, you know, variations with installation, which could be like the, the length of the cable and things like that, so, um.
So it's not attributed to equipment malfunction?
No, not at all, not at all, and just doing the firmware is, it's not actually a big deal, it's, um, something they can do quite easily, so.
Keep warning our residents, you're gonna hear this, you're gonna hear this, if you don't hear it, and.
And that was, they, I mean, they could have gone ahead and done that, but they, they did, they did have a concern that they would damage the amplifier, so, yeah.
I have a question, oh, go ahead.
No, no, we can go, Nora.
Are you getting the feeling, and I have always felt that HQE, as you mentioned, has been a really good partner to work with, but the kind of problems that we seem to be running into, when we originally were talking about this system, it was going to be many more poles. And we weren't able to get approval for locations of where we wanted them. Are you getting the feeling at all that maybe they can't provide what we need with three locations?
So, my feeling is that they, they are trying their best, and I feel that they're really committed to, to making it work, so they will, they've offered to make adjustments as needed. So, we're still in really early stages of testing, and so, you know, going forth with the fourth test, which is technically really the third, um, I think that, you know, they'll have a better gauge of that, and then they will make accommodations.
Okay, and I appreciate that.
So, to your point, right, when they initially presented two options to you, one was a nine pole solution and one was a three pole solution. Council opted to go with less poles, uh, to avoid, you know, view issues, so, from the get-go, the, this was one of their options. I don't believe that they are trying to make up for issues, but, you know, every, even their sound propagation studies that they presented to us, uh, and that you approved, are based on, you know, scientific calculations and assumptions. And so, the point of doing these tests and fine tuning things, I think is a part of the process to figure out what works best within the topography and where are there potential gaps or issues. So I, I think i, it's gonna be very telling for us to do, uh, the third or fourth, as, you know, Sam called it, test at the range that we clearly know is going to move through, you know, the canyons in a much better way than a, a much higher hertz range would. So, I, I don't feel like they are feeling, I don't get the sense from them that they are not confident they can't achieve what they have promised, uh, but they are committed to doing it right and to making up for any potential shortfalls that they are unable to anticipate based on just the pure science of it, if that makes sense.
It does, and I know that they're committed to it, as I said, I think they've been a really great partner to work with. My concern is when they start, and my origin, my recollection is that the original plans were not, that three was one of them, it was, I think, nine and six, or seven and, nine and seven or something like that.
There was a three.
There was initially?
Yeah, they had way more sirens on it and blah, 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 I mean, that was the thing.
There was a three, okay, but if they start talking about, well, that they're looking at maybe down in the flying triangle, putting another, um, pole, that was part of the problem, we couldn't get a place down in the flying triangle to put another pole. So, I, I, as long as it, you're the ones that are communicating with them, I still think they're a really good company, and I think, I believe you that they, that they are committed, that was my perception with going down and talking to them and Temecula and dealing with them. So I just, it was, if you had any extra insight, so you've answered my question, thank you.
So, I'm sorry, I had a question about the tone that you keep referring to, the five hundred to eight hundred hertz, um, that's for the, the, what we call the siren itself, that's not for the vocal?
Correct, yep.
Is that even been tested or looked at?
I believe we did test it on the first round, um, and they have stated that the, the vocal, uh, siren does not project as well as the tones. And so, um, you know, just in an emergency, in a dire situation, which is when we would use these, you know, they would kind of do both options just to have that, but, um, you know, it's, the, the tones are really what travels, so.
Five hundred to eight hundred hertz, that's pretty high, um, in, in music, A four forty is the A below middle C, so from, if you know anything about instruments and tones, middle C would be probably close to that five hundred range up to an octave above that, that's kind of high in the, uh, in the hertz range, so I'm just a little surprised that that's what they're, uh, they're shooting for.
Yeah, that, I mean, they, they tried various different tones, they tested them at different locations throughout the city, and that is the hertz range that they found was most effective. I just wanted to point out, um, I think the first step that they would do with the flying triangle is to adjust the, um, the siren at the fire station, um, first. And so they would adjust that and, and possibly add a speaker, um, to that pole, um, pointing in the direction of the flying triangle, or adjusting the direction of some of the current speakers, so that would be the first step.
Their map never showed my house being covered anyway, at least at, at the, I think, seventy decibel level, so, I, my expectations were pretty low to begin with.
And, and I'll just say, from an anecdotal standpoint, when Sam and I, during that test, uh, about a month ago, when we were driving around, what we pointed out to them was where we, you know, the test had all these different frequencies, and we told them when we could hear it, we could hear it at the beginning and at the end, and that, that happened to fall within that five hundred to eight hundred hertz. It was the one that was carrying, and we were trying to go to a variety of different, you know, points, uh, throughout the city to see, you know, what could you hear, so.
Yeah, another speaker on the pole would be, like, if, at Crest, at the fire station, if they're trying to cover down into the flying triangle, plus down into John's, down into John's Canyon, you know, if you turn them too much one way, they're already having problems down at the bottom of John's Canyon and Buggy Whip. But if they had, if they could attenuate a, an additional speaker in a different direction off the same pole, that.
Pat, you good? You good?
Yeah, I, so first, um, with regard to, I know you guys were traveling around the city, but it would be really nice to have, um, a more comprehensive survey to hear, what, who could actually hear it, I mean, and, and do it in a time when most people are home. I don't know if they can do it, obviously, I know that they work during the day, but that, that is kind of what's missing here, and it's, it's better if they're gonna give us some speakers in the home because that'll take, that'll be a less of a problem if people have it in there, but it doesn't solve the issue, like people say, oh, I don't, I don't want one, or I'm not, I don't think I'll need one, and they really don't know, and then they don't hear the, the report. But, so I'm, I just wondered if we could work on getting some, um, better system for getting resident information about.
I think, you know, we have, at least, uh, the, the second time, we, we got a, a good deal of feedback from residents, uh, and the, the association helped us out, we put a survey, uh, so they created kind of a heat map of where all the comments were coming from, and they were dispersed throughout the city. So I think as we continue to do that, people clearly will respond again, and then, and then you will have, uh, Sam, you know, or I riding around with them. They were gonna have two different cars, uh, of HQE employees in different areas, so, you know, the, the idea was to, uh, study ten to twelve locations, um, during this test, that didn't happen, uh, so, and then I think that coupled with any resident feedback is super helpful.
Okay, and then I guess the clarification on the grant that they're providing of these inside speakers, um, and there's several subparts, is the inside speaker, is it broadcasting both the tones and the voice inside, yes, okay. Then the other thing, does this grant include providing one to every single residence in Rolling Hills?
The, the grant provides, um, hardware for each of the poles to broadcast, and then it provides a deeply discounted rate for residents to purchase the radio for their home. Now, you know, we can always discuss this further, if the council, through our emergency preparedness funds, or, you know, wanted to subsidize some or part of it, or, you know, that's, that's a discussion we could have, uh, later on as well. But, uh, but a, as they're presenting it right now, it would be for purchase by anyone who wanted to have one in their home.
Maybe Cal OES has some money for that.
Just under, it's just under four hundred grand.
Yeah, I would, do we know what that deeply discounted rate is?
Are not at liberty to disclose.
Oh, okay, so, um, and then is that something where the volume can be adjusted within the home by the resident, or is it just something that's gonna be a, a static?
So I, I don't have specifics right now, but I think to Sam's point, where she discussed that we, HQE really wants to have a, a, a super informative webinar, or some type of, I think a webinar might be best to, you know, broadly reach, and then we can videotape it and be able to share it repeatedly with residents. Uh, but we can get all that information and, uh, as part of that, and as a part of the frequently asked questions that Sam mentioned as well. So, you know, we will continue to share that information as it comes in, so, all I have for you right now is what it is, but I don't have the specifics at this time, so.
Okay, and I guess the, the last thing would be, um, would there be a way to make these devices of people or individual having to purchase them, where there would be available devices, like when they leave and they don't leave it in the home for the new resident, even though presumably wouldn't be something they. even though presumably wouldn't be something they should take with them, can a new resident get one, or is this going to be like a limited duration where you're out and you can't get these now, it's going to be really high? I guess the question is how, how much?
Yes, I don't have a specific answer for that. One would hope that somebody would leave it with the house because it won't work elsewhere. It's not like a NOAA radio, but we can clearly have, you know, try to troubleshoot the potential of what you are, you know, of that type of situation.
Yeah, okay.
You don't want to get into the business of regulating what buyers and sellers leave.
I understand, but, I mean, I would hate for somebody to move in and then everyone else talks about their system and they don't have one and now they're not available except for double the price or whatever, but.
Okay, all right, we're all good? Open for a comment? See, none, closed public comment, and? How big's the, I think the generator, how big's the generator by the post by his house? Hole in the next one right by your house, a big generator right next to that thing.
Motion to receive and file.
All right, can I make the motion to receive and file?
I do.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Happy holidays, everybody.
You want to get to wear that for so long, so enjoy it. Now we go into the exciting closed session, but where you have to stay when you're down here?
Uh, five years, we're at the long-term future of work.
Oh, that's not bad down there.
Ask Christian, I'll call off. Call one.
Okay.
Are we off, Christian, or when do we?
Okay, am I leaving now or do you want to just do?
Hold on.
Travel far from here at this time of night.
I went before the meeting because I knew, I went to another meeting.
Thank you for coming, appreciate it.
I have the camera. Second.
Okay.
Back into open session. Mr. Mayor, if I will, I'll give my closed session report. The City Council recessed into closed session at 9:12 p.m. pursuant to the three items listed on the agenda. The City Council reconvened into open session at 10:10 p.m. and no reportable action was taken. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and then we're going to adjourn this meeting until January 13th.